Good evening. We welcome you to the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have a quorum present. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I believe we have five council members present. Councilmember Tom Hune, I believe, will join us shortly. And Councilwoman Karen Lang, not sure if she'll be here tonight. With that then, we'll get right into our agenda. And we'll begin with a Inside the Police Department video.
Recognizing biases is an important part of training in the West Valley City Police Department. A person's attitudes and stereotypes can affect their actions and decisions, even subconsciously. For officers, becoming aware of those implicit biases helps them serve the community better.
Once you realize the biases you may have, you may possess without knowing it, that will allow you to separate that. That will allow you to, as you're doing your job, as you're maintaining your professionalism, that will allow you to come to a more successful resolution of the overall issue that you're dealing with by knowing what biases you may have.
West Valley City Police Officers explore bias in a number of ways. Officers take the Harvard Implicit Bias Test. They also receive training through the Utah Risk Management Agency and from experts in the classroom setting.
What the officers will do after, you know, as they're going through these testing process, well, they will be able to recognize their own implicit bias that they possess, which will, in turn, once they recognize that, they will then be able to apply that to the community to develop a better trust with the community, to develop a better outcome with the different situations they're faced with, with the community.
Implicit bias training in West Valley City goes even a step further. In addition to dedicated training, the implicit bias concept is incorporated into all training.
For example, we incorporate bias-based policing and de-escalation concepts in OC training, our TASER training, our impact weapons training, our firearms training.
The training applies implicit bias awareness into everyday scenarios that officers face.
Let's take domestic violence calls, for example. When we train on domestic violence situations, scenario-based training, we also keep in mind of our implicit bias training and our de-escalation concept training because people involved in domestic violence situations could be of a different race, of a different culture. It could be a different belief system altogether. The more we know about our own biases, the more we are able to come to a safe outcome for the people involved in the domestic violence situation.
Through education and discussion, officers learn to recognize and, most importantly, manage their biases. It's knowledge that promotes justice and fairness, concepts that drew many officers to the job in the first place.
If they can become more aware of their own biases and become more aware of any type of racial biases or gender biases that they may have that they may not even know they possess, they can learn more about themselves, which will then come to a very successful outcome on representing the PD, the police department, and representing the citizens they serve.
Thank you. Excellent series. Next are our minutes of August 18th. A motion on the minutes.
I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Very good. Hearing no further comments, the minutes without objection will be approved. Not hearing any objection. It passed unanimously. Next, we have our public comment period. This is general. We do have a public hearing related to our West Valley City Code, the engineering standards, et cetera. That will be separate if anyone wants to comment on that. But this is for any general comments of any nature. So we, how many do we have, Nicole?
We just have one tonight, Mayor Jim D. Sock.
Okay, then I won't make any more comments. He's familiar with everything, so let's bring him on.
Thank you, Mayor. This last weekend, I drove around my two areas for the Clean and Beautiful Committee and awarded six beautiful yards out there. I had the area between 5,600 to 6,447 down to 35. So I had that whole back area in there. There was a lot of nice, well-kept properties, but for every one nice, well-kept one, there was at least 25 that needed a visit from code enforcement. It's not as bad as it was last year, but it does look like it's been a forgotten area, especially the further you go back. It's been cleaned up a lot now, that Mountain View Corridor, that whole area. Last year, they were tearing everything out and things were a real mess over there. So it is getting better, but it is an area that, you know, needs a little bit more of enforcement. That's all I have tonight. It's good to see you guys and be safe, stay strong.
That's it. Thank you. And that's all, Nicole?
Yes, sir. That's everyone.
Okay. Then to our city manager, excuse me, Assistant City Manager, who's sitting in for Wayne Pyle, who is off for the next few days. Any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
City council members? Okay, then we will go to the next item on our agenda, which are public hearings. We have, let's see, this is the one that was carried, no, excuse me, this is the one on engineering standards. A large amount of this is technical in nature. There were a few policy changes in there. And I don't recall too much about this. Some were just to bring them up to speed. A lot of it had to do with stormwater and the standards related into that. The state made changes there. And so we, of course, updated our policies to match those. But it was a good opportunity to kind of combine things, eliminate obsolete outdated sections, consolidate things, and reorganize them into more logical chapters. And so all of that was done and is now before us for recommendation for approval. So that's probably enough on that. I'm not an engineer. I do know that engineers perform extremely critical work in our society, especially in our building codes, stormwater, et cetera, all of those things. So with that introduction, then, we'll turn to our city recorder. Is there anyone online to speak to this?
No, sir, there is not.
No engineers calling to comment, so, all right. Well, with that then, I won't, I'll open and close it in the same breath for public comment. And we will consider, there are fought two for six different sections of the code. These will be ordinances 20-32, 33, 34, 35, 36, or excuse me, 35, and then resolutions 20-135 and 136. So those issues we will now deal with and to the council.
Move for approval of ordinance 20-32?
Second.
It's before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next.
Move for approval of ordinance 20-33?
Second.
Properly before us, valid motion, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
And Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next to ordinance 20-34.
Move to approve ordinance 20-34?
Second.
Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye, sorry.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, now we go to, I guess, ordinance 20-35?
Move for approval. Go ahead, Jake. Move for approval of ordinance 20-35? Second.
Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now to resolution 20-135.
Move for approval of resolution 20-135?
Second.
Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, resolution 20-136, our stormwater management plan.
Move to approve resolution 20-136?
Second.
Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda, we have resolution 20-137. It's an inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County and our city to participate as co-permittees under the Jordan Valley Municipals Municipalities MS4 permit. And what this is, we work with the county as co-permittees on stormwater runoff and being able to discharge those into state-owned discharge systems, meaning through the canals, down through the Jordan River, et cetera. And they agree to, this is an agreement to share information, work together, reimburse expenses for each other as needed. And the city will pay the county for Public Education and Involvement Campaign in accordance with agreements we have in place, so that is the purpose of this. Doesn't do much other than make sure we're in compliance with all requirements and with all entities, other municipalities, the county, and state requirements. And with that, then, to the council.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 20-137?
Second.
Second.
It's properly before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yeah.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now we are down to our unfinished business. This is action on ordinance 20-29, property at 1078 West Parkway Avenue, that was proposed to be rezoned to a business research park. And last week, motion was made, the motion failed, it was a tie vote. And so a motion was made that passed to continue this to our meeting tonight. So as mentioned in our study meeting, motion to either approve or disapprove or continue to, again, to next week since we do not have all our council members present. But whatever the council decides council members want to do to the council.
I would move to continue this item until all council members are present.
Second.
Thank you. That is probably the best motion, rather than setting a specific time, although we will determine if we can, if all the council members will be present, for example, next week. And if they are, then we would add it back to the agenda.
Right.
If we hear of anyone not being in attendance, we would hold off on that. So the motions before us, any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously for continuance.
Okay, there is not a need for a closed session. So for the city, regular city council meeting, that concludes our business. But we do have another special meeting right after this. And you know that I did remember this time.
Thank you.
So with that, a motion to adjourn our regular city council meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objection, we are unanimously adjourned.
Thank you. We'll call to order the special RDA meeting. Note that we've had a roll call and we have six members of the agency present. First order of business is an approval of minutes from August 11th.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Second. Properly before us, is an objection to the minutes, we'll consider them approved unanimously. Any discussion? Minutes then are approved unanimously. Mr. Isaac, is there someone to explain this resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I didn't hear that. You bet. I'll be glad to do that. Thank you. This resolution authorizes the agency to essentially execute an incentive agreement with, I believe the name of the developer is Sansoni, who is looking to develop two very large buildings. One, 207,000 square feet, the other, I believe, is closer to 200,000 square feet in our northwest economic development area, which is approximately 6940 west and 2100 south. The problem is, is that there has been some soil dumped there over the years, which has caused the land to basically become unstable. And so they need to mitigate that by, by essentially taking that out and compacting it and so forth. The cost of that is about $1.3 million, I believe. And the agency now is desirous, in order for them to make sure that we do get the development to come in, to incentivize them to the tune of about $600,000 to help them defray the cost of this mitigation.
Okay, thank you. The resolution is in front of the agency.
Did they do the soil test, soil testing before they planned to build this one, Paul?
Boy, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I imagine that they, at some point in time, obviously, they discovered that that soil was dumped there, and perhaps they knew that prior going in. Is there anyone online that happens to know the answer to that question?
Yes, Paul, I have Jeff Jackson from our CED department. Jeff, you should be able to unmute your mic now.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. Beautiful, okay. Yes, extensive soil tests were conducted beforehand.
So they knew about the soil problem before they bought the land?
They're still, they won't close on the land. The land is, it's pending this incentive. So they will close on the land pending this incentive. So we're still trying to reel in the fish.
Okay.
So try to explain to me here, so they tried to buy this property and try to build a building, big building, and they did the soil testing there and they found something there. And they still building this building and they asked us to pay money for this? Or they didn't know that and they're in the middle of something, they asked us to have them out?
So I just want to make sure I understood your question properly. So they reached an agreement to purchase the property. They went through due diligence period.
Okay.
The due diligence, and during the due diligence period, they do all their soils testing and so forth.
Right.
In which case they determine or they discover the 10 feet of undocumented fill. And so they're going down the road of doing the development without any sort of incentive. And so when we learned that they might be uninterested in doing the development based on the 10 feet of undocumented soil and not having a stable condition for construction, and we learned that they might not be interested in doing this project, we realized that we'd be losing an opportunity to bring in good jobs, bring in a good development, beautify the 201, get rid of the playa and wetlands, and we didn't want to lose out on that opportunity. We thought it was a good idea. So we, we determined that $600,000 post-performance incentive, so it's only if they build the project. The two, the total received in the RDA would be $2.8 million over the period of the project area. And so 600,000 represents 21% of that money that's generated from that. So the RDA is able to have a great opportunity here and the city has a great opportunity to improve, bring in jobs and beautify.
Okay, so the short, short note is, you know that, and we don't want to lose the opportunity to do business with them. So we want to chip in to pay them a little bit money so they can do this project, so we can build it and we have workforce there. That, that, that the case, basically, right? Because RDA, $2.7 million, we want to put in $600,000 first. Is that right?
We don't, the $600,000 is overtime. It's over, it's post-performance. So they'll, they'll take the hit right away. They'll, they're going to take the hit and then over the next five years, we're going to help them offset that $600,000. And just, just, just to make sure that it's clear.
Okay, so they paid that money to pay the $600,000 first, and then over six, six years, over six years, we're going to pay that. Can't recover about by RDA. Is that right?
Correct. And just, just so you know, councilman, the conditions of the site are unstable for any developer, not just this developer. So if another developer came along and desired to, to develop here, we would come across the same conditions and the same situation, same, same challenges.
Understand, understand. What did they do again? They tried to do again the warehouse?
There are going to be two warehouses of totaling 410,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Care?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Ron Bigelow. So it seems to me, as I've studied this, that this financial incentive that we give, which amounts to about 21% of the increased revenues that will come from the project being there. And that if we are to do this project, or if we want this land to be built upon, this is the incentive we give. And the 21% seems reasonable. You know, if it were 90%, then you, you know, there would be a question. And that's when cities get into trouble and RDAs get into trouble when they give away all of it or the majority of it. But this one seems to be reasonable. But this one seems to be reasonable. And if we were to not do it, it would just sit there. And so this will, long term, increase the revenue base of the city. And so as I went through it, I felt pretty good about it. I know our staff does a great job of putting these together. And they make very care... They're very sure, they work very hard, to ensure that it's financially feasible for the city. And they have a great track record with these. So I'm very supportive of it.
Yeah, I understand. I think they're very reasonable, and I think it's the right thing to do for our city. Just clear my mind a little bit, because I thought maybe they didn't know before they purchased, but they know it, and then we jump in, we have them out, and I agree with that.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of resolution 20-11.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion before us. Ms. Kamek, is there further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kamek, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Fidisamanu?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 20-12.
Thank you, sir. This is to approve, I believe, two agreements with A1 Environmental Incorporated to remove asbestos and hazardous, other hazardous waste on two of the properties owned by the Housing Authority, which is located approximately 1700, I think it's 1739 or 40 West and 1750 West on Lake Park Drive. After this is done, after the removal of the asbestos and so forth, the houses will be demolished.
Okay. Is there a motion anyone would like to make?
Mr. Chair, could I ask Mr. Isaac a question?
Certainly.
These are the... Now, were these houses, weren't they apartments? And the city owned them?
Fourplex.
Housing Authority owned them, and I think they were fourplexes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make that clear. And in order to demolish them because of the asbestos and other hazardous materials, it is not cheap.
It's $105,000, I believe. And of course, it has to be removed before we demolish them, so...
Yeah. So, and they have become a nuisance, as I understand it, because they are currently vacant.
Right.
Right, and before we can do anything with them, we have to abate the asbestos.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Would you like to continue with the motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, I just put my computer down.
It's resolution 2012.
Resolution 20-12. Sorry.
No problem. It's before us. Any further discussion?
Was... We did get a second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear it, so that's not surprising.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kamek, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Fidisamanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that concludes our business. One final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any objection to adjourned? Hearing none, we are unanimously adjourned. Thank you very much.